I can't get this up here though.
It doesn't show though.
It doesn't show though.
Where's your email?
There it is.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we are.
He's just trying to... Should it be... So I hit it here?
Use document camera and should bring that one down.
Oh, that's what happened. Yeah.
The PC is on here. It's red.
Yeah, he's making sure it's working.
There it is. Oh? Yep. We'll just delay it until next time.
Do you want to go ahead and get the...
Go on. Okay. We'll call the December 1st meeting of City Council to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Gallups?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Schoblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson is absent.
Pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Well, at least it's not too bad out tonight. Uh, we'll have approval of agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's one and two. Okay, we'll have public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name, address, for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Well, I know it's hard for you.
My name is Babel Hornburg. I live at... Out on Michael Avenue in Douglas Township. For those of you that do not know me... Yes? For those of you that do not...
Not know me. I was born and raised here. I moved out of town 2002. Uh, I spent almost fifty years as a resident here. I owned my own construction company, have for forty years. And, uh, we work. Put it very simply, we work hard. And I think anybody that knows me knows that. The Public Works Crew that you have today is the best one I've ever seen. And I've seen a lot of them. And I know what's going on, I know work, I understand work. It was very sad, I was in the Public Works meeting tonight, when that man right there accused his own crew, the crew I'm talking about, of lying. Now, I take offense to that, and I hope you people do too. And furthermore, I hope that you look into what the hell is going on around here, 'cause I know, and I ain't very happy about it. And it's your job to do something about it. And I expect you'll do it. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no... No one else is here, we'll go on. Presentations. The main...
It's all yours, Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, I don't know why. I switched to a different input system and it worked. Put the other one back on, and away you go. More about a day at the Cannon Falls Library.
What do I do, just tap this to...
Yeah, you essentially can... Just use the arrow keys, or you can tap on the screen.
Got it. Well, I just have to say it and get it out of my system. We check out books at the library. And I say that somewhat to be funny, but there's a lot of articles and stuff going around about what do public libraries look like, where are public libraries going? What do we do, how do we present ourselves? But the fact of the matter is, we've been checking out books for probably centuries. And we're still checking out books. And we're going to continue to check out books. At least throughout my lifetime. So, all this stuff about, well, what's this library doing? What's this library doing? In Cannon Falls, majority of our patrons, they're there to check out books. So what we're going to do tonight is sort of walk through, what does that look like? What does a library look like on a daily basis? Well, to begin with, when you start your day out, you usually want to have a general idea of what you're going to do. Our mission statement is, "The Cannon Falls Library promotes the communication of ideas, the enlightenment of our citizens, and the enrichment of our personal lives." Pretty big mission statement for a little library in a small town. But each day, we try to engage the citizens of Cannon Falls and those outside of Cannon Falls in those ideas. Those communication with each other, broadening their horizons and enriching their own lives through their public library. What does that look like? In the morning, we don't open till ten. We got a lot of stuff to do. Um, overnight, people drop their books off in the book drop. Some of them because they might be late and they think they can sneak them through without getting fined. Others, because it's just convenient. We're not always open, you know? Some people don't get back to Cannon Falls until after seven o'clock at night. So it's a convenient way to drop your books off. Also, we're part of a greater library region called Selco Region. I won't go too much into that. But in that, we have what's called interlibrary loan with other libraries. And a lot of, majority of what we do is with... In libraries within southeastern Minnesota, but we can reach out to greater Minnesota. That's what this ILL stuff is. So in the month of October, Cannon Falls residents, our library patrons, borrowed six hundred and seventy-two books from other libraries. Our library being a small library, we loaned out three hundred and twenty-one books. Now, those books have to get checked in, they have to get processed, they have to get pulled off our shelves and sent on to other libraries. And then the libraries that are sending materials to us, we have to check those in, get those on hold, and on the hold shelf for the library patrons that are looking for those materials. So, it may look like a small library, but when you think about the greater picture of southeastern Minnesota, you've got a huge collection to choose from. So pretty much, almost any book that you're looking for, we can get. And if not, we'll try really hard to find it for you. There are some difficult books out there. I'm not going into that, that gets a little complicated. It's kind of fun to deal with, though. And find those books and get them in. Even if they're not in the state of Minnesota, we get them throughout the United States. We find a library that has it, we try to borrow it. And if not, if it's of general interest to the public, we purchase it for our residents. So that they're getting the materials that they're asking for. What happens when we open? Well, we're open forty-five public service hours a week. Um, in the month of October, we circulated around thirteen thousand items. So that means checking in, checking the items out. So if you think about it, for a little town with about four... Four thousand people, checking out that many books, you've probably got about one or two books per citizen. Now, not everyone participates in the library. But, it's a large amount. And when you sort of break it down into a daily, I thought it was kind of interesting, and I was talking with my staff about this, that's about sixty-nine items an hour. So, you know, that's pretty fast checking out. And of course, it never works out that we just slowly check out one book a minute. It's usually lunch rush, so we're checking out multiple books all at once. And then on top of that, it's not just about checking out books. Not everyone is capable or has easy access to a computer, to an up-to-date computer, to fast internet service. I know y'all have been dealing with this with MediaCom and all of that good stuff. It's not always working. Your printer goes down at home. You've got to print out something for a document. The library is there for that. And then we have those who have their own unique devices. You know, your iPhones, your cell phones, and all of this stuff. And you know how much you pay for data and all of that stuff when you need it. Well, the library has free Wi-Fi access. And we usually get about two hundred and twenty-five people a month using that. So that's sort of the upfront public end of a lot of what we do, is processing those books, getting those books in the right hands, getting those materials into who needs it, providing internet access, Wi-Fi access. And then we get into sort of the meat and bones a little behind the scenes. We usually catalog around seventy-five new materials a month. Doesn't sound like a lot. But let's think about this. You're at home, you're on Amazon, you are Barnes &amp; Noble or whatever book company you want. You order your book, it comes to your door. You pick up your book, you read it, you put it on the shelf. Guess what? That doesn't work in a public forum. We can't just order that book, put it on the shelf, let people take it out of the library and bring it back. Sometimes it may get brought back, it may not. So we have to catalog these materials. We have to get them in the system so that you're sitting at home, you can type in and actually search for what you're looking for. Because we, you know, we don't always know exactly what it is or what the title is of a book we're looking for. So we have to go through and describe those books, and put in some key words, put in the author, put in the date, so that patrons can come in and search for that book and have it in the system. And then there's also those impatient people that know the book is coming out two years in advance, and they want to know we're going to get it. So we can order it in advance, get it in our system, so that you can go ahead and put a request on that book. And chances are, you'll be the first person to check that book out when we get it through our system and process. So that's a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that works with all of those materials, that you don't see, that's not there. And then I would say probably one of our easiest features that we just buy into, through Selco, um, we work as a consortium so that we can actually afford e-materials. And each month, we have around four hundred and seven e-materials that get checked out. E-materials meaning ebooks that you get downloaded directly to your device for free through your public library, with your public library card. So you can be sitting on your nice vacation in Australia maybe, and you just have to have a book. You go on the World Wide Web, type in Cannon Falls Library, type in the ebooks, or overdrive through Selco. You can sit right there on the beach, download a free ebook. At your convenience, wherever you want to. So, that's sort of a rough idea of what we do generally in our open hours. And then some. We don't stop with books. Remember, we're trying to enrich and enlighten people. And I remember in library school, we had this term called a library patron is a person we get from cradle to grave. So, early learners. We hear a lot in the news and stuff about early childhood education, early learning, early learning. Libraries are at the forefront of that. Each week, we offer three weekly children's programs. We've got a Monday program at ten fifteen. We've got a Tuesday program at ten fifteen. Two totally separate, different programs, different presentations. And then on Wednesday, we have what's called a lunch bunch. Kids are encouraged to come in, bring their lunch, sit down, and Ms. Gale reads stories to them. It gets them exposed to books at an early age. And we're talking toddlers, some of them aren't even out of their, uh, child carriers. They're sitting there, but they're being exposed to reading, to what's going on in a story, and following along with it. Then we also offer a monthly movie. This gets a little complicated. It's not like just going down to, to Morris's store and renting a DVD and putting in the... In the player and pressing play. We've got to have public license. The public license that we have, we have to research and find out, well, what movies can we show legally to the public? Um, and then we have to judge, well, who's our audience? Who's coming to these events? What kind of movies are they looking for? So a lot of research goes into that. We have a monthly book club. The book club sort of gets together, they choose a book, or if staff chooses a book for them to read, they get together once a month, sit down and discuss a book. Then we have additional programs throughout the year. These programs can vary. Um, thanks to city and county's generosity through the budget, we do have a small programming budget where we can hire performers. We also, through Selco and the legacy funding, I know y'all voted on in Minnesota several years before I came, we fill out the grants for that. And then in turn, once we do the program, we fill out the report for that, which is usually kind of intensive. And it goes to the state legislators to let the legislators know what's going on with their legacy funding. Arts Challenge was sort of a new program for us this year. Got a lot of attention, got us a lot of neat artwork. So that's an additional program that we'll be continuing. Um, it's at very little cost to us, but it's a really great opportunity for the community to engage and show off their skills. Because that's also one of the greatest assets of a library, are the patrons that come in and out, and the communities that they represent. We also do, probably one of our big events during the year is summer reading, which is when the library picks up, when the schools have let out. Because you don't want the kids to get behind during the summer. You don't want them to sit around and goof off. So we do a program that encourages them, gives incentives for reading, coming in, doing more reading. Outside of the school year, it also gives them an opportunity to do recreational reading. Not a book that they're required to by classes. I was one of those students that if a teacher told me I had to read a book, chances are, I wasn't going to read it. Just because I had to. I didn't want to. She or he told me to read it, didn't want to do it. I liked other books. So, you know, summer reading's a time for kids to shine and really get into and enjoy reading. And this program takes a lot of development. It usually centers around a theme. And it also comes with funding through Selco and all of that good stuff to present this. And it's really taxing on the staff to have lots of kids running through the library on a daily basis, but we enjoy it. We also enjoy when school starts back again. So that's sort of a glimpse at what we do. And at the end of the day, when we sit back and think, well, gosh, how do we do all of this? We have two full-time staff, myself included in that. Nine part-time assistants. Their hours and duties vary. They're all well-trained, lots of experience. They clearly know what they're doing. They know how to develop these programs. They know how to develop and develop a collection. They know how to keep a collection going and vibrant. Then we have our library board, which is our governing board. Make sure we're doing our job and keeping up with our mission statement. We have the library foundation, which provides another aspect of funding for us. And I know you in the past provided quite a lot of work in getting a new library. We have city and county support. And we also have our greatest assets, our library patrons. They're the ones that keep the library going. They're the ones that keep the library vibrant and makes it a great community institution. So, that's my short in what we do is check out books. So, do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, Justin, um, people can also rental books that, um... CD books and that too. I mean, I know I did last winter, and when we were going someplace. And they're fantastic.
Absolutely. I, I didn't get too much into the collection. But we do offer audiobooks on CD, which are really great for traveling. Are you commuters out there? They're really good. Um, we have regular books, clearly that's my focus. We have DVDs, we have music CDs. And with a library card, you have access to multiple other audiobooks, CDs, DVDs, that may not be in our library, but they're in the greater Selco Region or greater Minnesota region to access. So that library card carries a lot of weight in Minnesota.
That's good. Anybody else? Thank you. Very good. Next is David, with the EDA.
Apparently all the spectators ran down to the library. I'm gonna have to hook this back up for me, uh, Justin. I gotta get back to this. I just have a single sheet, but... I was on the edge of my seat waiting for a Dewey Decimal update, but apparently... Do we still use that? The Dewey Decimal System, is that still?
Absolutely.
Nice. One of the nice things about the libraries is there's really a tangible product, which is the book, that you just heard about that. In the economic development business, unless we're seeing a building going up, it's, it's a little tough to see the results of our efforts. But what I wanted to say tonight is just to, to update the councilors and the public on what's going on in the economic development department, including the planning function. I end up handing both of those duties. And really, I like to say, it's, it's really the business of "we," not "me," both in the economic development area as well, as well as in planning. If the council was willing to give me all the money in the world, I could probably do all the economic development and not worry about anybody else. But that's not going to happen, it doesn't happen anywhere. So it really is the business of, of "we." And, and really, who are those "we" that I'm talking about? And I just want to go through some of the more significant groups that I work with and some of the projects that I've worked with each group on. Obviously, economic and development, economic development and planning all start with the city council. That's you five and the two that aren't joining you this evening. And with the support and the funding and the leadership and the regulatory function of the council, we can get things done in economic development. You take any one of those things away and it gets really, really difficult to, to make progress in the areas of economic development and planning. So, I'd like to thank the council for all the support that you've given and the prior councils I've worked with, because we can't get it done without you, and it's really important. Public Works Commission, obviously made up of the council, but there's been a, a number of projects that, that I've worked on with the Public Works Commission that relate to economic development and planning. In summary, the Union Court project that we just went through this year with the lift station, that ended up falling into my department and was able to work with the twenty-one property owners, the Public Works Commission and the council to get the lift station financed and, and a part of the municipal system. Also had a great deal of help with, with Tom and Greg here on that project. Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street, you may or may not remember that, but as a new hospital was getting built, all of a sudden everybody realized that to take the new frontage road out to the hospital is a long ways around. And, boy, we got to figure out those roundabouts too. What about Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street, the gravel street? Shouldn't that be blacktopped and improved? That project fell back within my department, and we were able to work with council support to deal with the three property owners who were most affected by Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street. And we're able to come up with a funding plan and a financing program to get that street paved to better serve the, the hospital. Another interesting project that the Public Works Commission helped me on most recently is the expansion of Interstate Lumber. A small piece of parkland that historically was, was misplaced with regards to the ownership tracts in that area. And we worked with the owner of Interstate, Public Works Commission, ultimately the city council, to sell a small piece of property that allowed Jeff Reinhardt to expand a, a building at Interstate Lumber. We were able to fix that problem. Again, an economic development and planning program, but really took the support and, and the encouragement in the direction of the Public Works Commission to, to work through those agreements. Planning Commission, Jay's here tonight. Jay's the current representative of the council at the Planning Commission meetings. And year in and year out, for the last seven or so years that I've been working with the Planning Commission, we're, we handle about ten to twelve permits a year. And those permits might be something as simple as a, as a variance to build a garage closer to the property line than what's the zoning ordinance allows. It might be a conditional use permit that allows someone to do something under the ordinance that isn't just permitted, it has to go through a process to be permitted. Ultimately, you on the council see those recommendations for conditional use permits. The Planning Commission also deals with, with the subdivision of lands, preliminary plats, final plats. Glenn Mulvihill's, uh, New Residential Development East of Town. That was a plating process that came through the, the Planning Commission, as did the rezoning for that. So the Planning Commission plays a, a very important role, both in economic development and obviously planning. And they provide good, sound recommendations to the city council. And all but one, in the seven years that I've been here, every recommendation of the Planning Commission has been accepted by the council with the exception of one project. And that wasn't too long ago, we all, we all remember that. So the commission does a great job, and, and I enjoy working with them to kind of process the applications as they come in. The Economic Development Authority, Morris, is a current council representative, along with Robbie, on the, on the Economic Development Authority. That's really a major role for, for myself, for the EDA, and a host of others. And you'll see, as I'll talk about some of these projects, the overlapping nature of all these groups with regards to economic development, Planning Commission, City Council, Public Works Commission, et cetera. And a couple of those projects include, first and foremost, the Cana River Winery Event Center. That's obviously a very significant development in this community. Uh, we worked as an EDA with the Maloney's to end up purchasing what used to be the former Lee Chevrolet property just to the west of the winery. We bought that back as an Economic Development Authority from the Maloney's to help them finance the ultimate development and creation of the event center. So we're very integral party with the Maloney's, in this case, a private party, to put together a very significant project in this community. The OMC Access, Olmsted Medical Clinic. We all drive by that probably daily. And you look at a beautiful building that was, was built there by Dr. Carl. And we wonder and maybe take for granted, how was their access given off of Highway twenty into that particular property? It was no small task to get that project permit. And I see Morris shaking his head. Greg and Tom both worked with me on, as well, on a staff level. And we were able to put together a, a right turn lane into that property. The Economic Development Authority bought some property from Dr. Mullinar for the street right-of-way that in the future will extend east and up the hill to serve Gemini's expansion. But near-term, it provided the access and driveway and street, uh, access to that clinic. Lawrence Meats, that's a pretty obvious project. A couple of years ago, they did a major multimillion-dollar expansion of their, of their meat facility, uh, out in the industrial park. And the Economic Development Authority ended up selling eighteen acres of land to help facilitate that expansion, to give them growth right now at the time and growth go into the future. Partnerships. We do a lot of partnership projects at the EDA level. One that I just want to mention briefly tonight, because it is rather unique even for us, is we are currently, as an Economic Development Authority, jointly funding a pretty significant evaluation of some property for future growth near the industrial park. When I say "we," I mean Dakota Electric is a financial partner in this undertaking to the tune of ten thousand dollars. Uh, Great River Energy is a financial partner in this undertaking to the tune of ten thousand dollars. And the EDA is a partner in this process to the tune of ten thousand dollars. So we're partnering up with, with two electric utilities to do a pretty serious evaluation of the potential for some pretty significant development, uh, in the future up on the north end of, of Cannon Falls. And the last one that I've noted here, but certainly not the least, is the brewery. There's been a lot of conversation recently about the brewery. And pleased to say that I think as of tomorrow, uh, it can officially be talked about on the streets of Cannon Falls with a real name of a real brewery that really has an interest in developing in the property that they have a purchase agreement to buy on, on Mill Street, four thirty-two Mill Street. The evolving role of the Economic Development Authority in that project is they have made a request for a, for a loan participation by the Economic Development Authority to help them finance their project. And we're in the process now of reviewing that, that application. So there's still a few things that, that need to be worked through and, and a few items and contingencies in, in that program. But, uh, at this point, we're very optimistic that we'll work forward to, to see that brewery opening up in 2016. Cannon Falls Economic Initiatives, you may not all be familiar with really who that is and where they came from. Back in the nineteen fifties, uh, several folks got together and, and pooled some money and started doing some, some private development to generate jobs and, and commercial, industrial expansion in this community. And that group, uh, basically grew over the years. And that group basically grew over the years, starting in the 1950s, and is now a single group that has resources, dollar resources available, operated by a board of nine. And they make loans, they do the things similar to what the Economic Development Authority does on behalf of the city to spur on economic development in the community. They've been involved with the Brewster's Street Facade Project, the New Deck Project that Chuggers built on the west side of their building, and the Olmsted Medical Clinic. They've got a participation in that. So, they're a group that we work with closely on the Economic Development Authority side, but they're separate from us. And we're able to do some things together and we'll continue to do that in the future. Chamber of Commerce, I attend all of the board members. The BRNE Program, a lot of acronyms here. That's Business Retention and Expansion Program, where we take representatives of the Chamber Board, representatives of the Economic Development Authority, and go out and meet with individual businesses during the course of the year. And we try to do five or six visits a year. That's not a lot, but we try to get those done, and we've had some really good results sitting down and talking to our employers, talking to our businesses jointly with representatives of the Chamber Board and the Economic Development Authority. Signage, we've talked about that, you've heard about that on the city council and elsewhere on the heels of the Highway 52 project. Worked very closely with the Chamber Board on the welcome sign and other directory signage in the community that we're dealing with on the heels of the Highway 52 interchange project, and we will continue to do that with their input and direction. That's been a good relationship. And of course, the Chamber does a fair amount of marketing to supplement the things that the Economic Development Authority wants to see done in the community, Economic Initiatives might want to see done in the community, and the Chamber Board wants to see done in the community. So, they do a lot of promotional events, marketing events, and we try to cooperate with them where we can. Grow Cannon Falls, the new group that we just heard about this year. Not started by the EDA, not started by me, not started by the city council. This was a group of local business folks who noticed a growing number of vacant buildings in the downtown and said, "Hey, what's going on? We gotta do something." So, they started with that by holding a couple of significant events at the event center at the winery. And I'll tell you that a number of things have evolved from those meetings. The first is that there was conversation at both of the events about the need for additional or expanded lodging opportunities in this community. That was brought back to the Economic Development Authority, and the Economic Development Authority engaged a recognized consultant to do a market study for, to assess the need for additional lodging in the community. The EDA paid for that. That report is done, and the EDA now is looking at several sites, along with the development team, to hopefully move that project forward. If the right site can be selected and the investor group can be put together, we could very well see some construction of some additional lodging in this community, maybe as soon as 2016. That came out of Grow Cannon Falls. That's where that idea originated from, and that's where some of the contacts were met. Additionally, with Grow Cannon Falls, last week at the Minnesota Real Estate Journal Summit on Industrial and Economic Development held up in the Twin Cities, we actually had an exhibit there. I was there, along with two other representatives of the community. Roxanne Flotan from the EDA was there, and Jim Althoff from Grow Cannon Falls and Economic Initiatives. And we were there for about four hours. We had an exhibit area there. We were handing out materials and meeting people in the Twin Cities area who are involved on a daily basis with commercial industrial real estate. So, we are starting to do a little bit more marketing along those lines, and we'll see what success that may bring. The brewery is on the Grow Cannon Falls list again. Why? Because the brewers that we're working with, that, again, we hope to announce officially tomorrow, that lead came as a result of the Grow Cannon Falls efforts. It wasn't anything that I discovered, it wasn't anything someone else in the community before that came up and said, "Hey, we know some folks who might be interested in your community to start a brewery." That came directly from the Grow Cannon Falls efforts, and we can tie that back. So, the brewery connection that we've got now, that we've been working with at the EDA level, really emanated out of the Grow Cannon Falls events. Ship Livwell Team, what the heck is that? That's a very new group, and you can see over to my left, there's some paneled signs there that have identified a number of our local food producers in the community. And that is one part of a display exhibit, it's only one part, there's another larger one, that we're using to promote the local foods businesses in our community at various venues. Starting this weekend, we'll be in Rochester at the Feast Event, which is a very significant food event and celebration. We'll be there as an Economic Development Authority. We have five of our local businesses there with us. We're all exhibiting in the same area. We will have our sign displays, we'll have information about Cannon Falls, but this is thousands of people who have an interest in local foods, healthy eating, and will be there promoting Cannon Falls as a place, not only for our existing businesses, but for others that may wish to join us in that arena. And that's just an example of some of the products that we'll be taking with us. Ship actually financed this through grant. I have to thank Diane Howard for that. She's done all the work on that to coordinate with Ship and the Goodhue County Livwell Team to secure a grant, a little over $1,500 to pay for that, so we really appreciate that work. Also with Ship, we're working now to evaluate the opportunities and the needs for an expanded farmer's market and a food hub through those programs. Cannon Falls Housing Initiative, I mentioned, not because it's our school house building program, we all know about that, I'm a board member, I really like that work. We were the big builder the last several years, building the only house that was built all year in Cannon Falls, so we've been pretty active as home builders in the last few years, given the downturn in the economy. But I bring that to your attention, and Morris in particular, of the councilors is very familiar with this. One of the most exciting projects that I've had a chance to work on that took a long time to put together is what was gonna happen when Mayo built their new hospital south of town? What was gonna happen with the existing building? And the results that you're seeing today with the first house being built where the old hospital sat, didn't occur after a month's work, two months' work, three months' work, four months' work. I remember over three years ago, getting invited to a meeting at the hospital to talk about what are we gonna do once the hospital moves to the new location, what's gonna happen with that building? Long story short, the council's been pretty involved with that, Public Works Commission's been involved with that, the Economic Development Authority's been involved with that, and the outcome of all those efforts is we have four lots now where the old hospital sat, two of which are owned by Economic Initiatives, two of which are owned by the Goodhue County Habitat, and we'll have four brand-new homes built where the old hospital was, and where the parking lot used to be will be a neighborhood park. So, having the ability to corral Cannon Falls Housing Initiative into part of the solution of that project is something that I'm very proud to say that I had a role in, but again, it's not me, it's we. The other thing I'll say is that, and then I'll conclude my remarks, is citizens. What else goes on in economic development and planning? We see through the building permit process, historically, 100 or so permits each and every year. It's not all new houses, obviously, it's not all new commercial industrial buildings, it's new windows, it's new garages, it's new additions and roofs to homes of this community, but we see all of them. I need to sign every one of them. So, they come through Diane primarily, and then to me, and then on to Goodhue County Building Department. We process those, and during the construction season, it's not unusual to see quite a number of permits each and every week. So, we do that, along with, every day is an interesting day here, it goes without saying. And I'm sure you get calls, I get calls, that sometimes you go, "Mm-hmm, okay. I'm not sure what the answer to that question is, but we're all gonna deal with it." And we do. So, we get a lot of inquiries in at City Hall, not all of which come through my department or to me directly, but we get a lot of those every day. People wondering about permitting and what they need to do in order to accomplish something that they want to do on their property, and those inquiries come through us as well. And again, finally, I guess, as Justin mentioned too, that just like the library, we have a lot of other state and federal agencies that we deal with on a regular basis. Lenell does, Jeff does, Tom does, Greg does, Justin, we all do. And I would like to say that I don't have to, but unfortunately, that's not true. So, we do a lot of work throughout the course of the year with a lot of state and federal agencies. That's just the nature of the business, whether it's permitting, financing, monitoring activities, we get involved with that. So, in summary, I'll conclude now, just by saying that, again, this is the business of "we," not "me." You all know that, you see that. It's true with the Planning Commission, it's true with the Economic Development Authority. There's not really anything, really, that gets done in my world individually. It's all collectively, and it takes time. But, at the end of the day, I think we see some really positive results of all of our efforts, and I'm pretty optimistic for next year that we're gonna see some more good things and we're gonna keep at it. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'll try to address those at this time.
I just want to say that if anybody hasn't been by the old hospital, do it, because it's a surprise. It's a great surprise.
And I say, Morris, that just from experience in many other communities, it's a pretty unusual outcome. Oftentimes, old schools, old hospitals, old buildings get left, get left behind, and they sit, and they sit, and they sit, and they sit. And I'll tell ya, you know, working with Mayo has been a tremendous opportunity to experience. I think the outcome that we were able to work through collectively with them is a good one, and I think, again, with three more homes to follow the one that's built up there, I think that's gonna reestablish that residential neighborhood in a really positive way, and I know the neighbors are happy to.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Now that we've got light. Thanks, Tom. Okay, now we're going to go to the consent agenda, and items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. A, just and correct claims, accounting period ending November 25th. Minutes, or meeting minutes of November 17th, city council meeting. Minutes, meeting minutes for the November 17th city council work session. And D, the second reading for the adoption of ordinance 343, amending Title III of the City of Cannon Falls Code relating to salaries of the mayor, mayor pro tem, and council members. Do I hear anybody wanting to bring anything down? Everybody's quiet. Do I hear a motion or any discussion?
I'll second.
Got a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
With that, everybody is that. Okay, so next is the council business. It's the Resolution 2169, adopting the 2016 tax levy and budget public input. Do we have any discussion? Now, this is the 3.5. We came out of the work session on the 17th of November, which was, it amounts to, I believe, $2 to $3 a year on a $200,000 house, right?
That's correct, yes.
Do I hear any discussion with that?
I just feel that they did a really good job.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we're holding ourself in that, and the city's doing a good job. I mean, so...
Yeah, and this is the opportunity for the public. We are required by state statute to offer a chance for the citizens to offer input into this budget, so this would be the meeting that was selected for that opportunity. We don't have anyone here this evening, apparently, that wishes to do so, so that's duly noted that it was offered and no one was here, so...
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Reports, the staff. Greg, you got anything? Dave? Tom?
I'd just like to thank Mr. O'Gorman for those glowing reviews of our staff, and I agree with him 100 percent.
Chief?
Well, we dodged our first major snowfall, which I'm happy for. That meant we didn't have to tow anybody, but it will get here. And I just want to remind people that if they are parked out on the street during a snow removal event, we begin towing at midnight, so that when Public Works comes out, the streets are already cleared and they can just plow and not have to worry about slowing down and going around vehicles. The other thing I want to remind people is that we are through the Thanksgiving holiday. Christmas and New Years are next to follow, but from now until New Years, the Cannon Falls Police Department, along with our other partners in Toward Zero Death, Red Wing, Zambroda, Kenyon or Goodhue, and the Sheriff's Office, will be doing saturation patrols as part of our wave this month or this cycle, which is on impaired driving. So, you know, please don't drive impaired. Make plans for a safe and sober driver, but if you are driving, don't be surprised if, you know, we make arrangements to get you home in some other way. So, that said, enjoy the holidays, but please plan ahead if you're gonna be drinking. It's all happening.
I know.
Nothing.
Nothing.
I just want to bring up about Lake Billsby, and I was out there looking at it today, and it has gotten really where it's like a river now instead of a lake, and so I'm, I was told that now the current might be a little bit stronger and may not freeze over as well as it has because it spread out like a lake before. So, I'm wondering, is there somebody that will put up signs?
Sure, the water falls to the jurisdiction of the sheriff, so in this case, it would be Dakota and Goodhue County Sheriff's Office. My guess is, is there be monitoring that? I know, working with the dam on Dakota County on the dam and the project that's going on, we have representatives from both sheriff's offices at those quarterly meetings, so I'm guessing that they will be monitoring that, because you're right, it is changing the dynamics of the water flow out there, and so some areas that normally are very, very thick could possibly be much thinner than they would normally be. But, they would be posting the signs at the entrances to the public access and stuff to warn people if there is thin ice conditions. It would be...
Yeah, I hope the newspaper will say something too, because kids are on their snowmobiles or, you know, not thinking about it.
Yep. Yep, it's definitely gonna change the dynamics, and it will not be refilled until into April, I believe, maybe May.
Good, thanks.
Nothing.
See, Tom, I got one question that I forgot to ask you last time. When is it that you guys, you know, you used to plow the snow downtown into the center of the street and then clean it up?
Right.
Why, or is there certain criteria or...
Yeah, there's certain timelines when we can get in there and we can't. Like, the last storm, of course, was snowing right up until, if we're not in and out of there by about 5:30, we're just, that's at the mercy of Mother Nature. And we try to, you know, through the day, get in and out of there, but it really gets to be quite a goat rope once things turn like that. But, yeah, in a typical snow, we would get in there, would bring it to the center and truck from there, but like I say, just because of the timing of the storm...
Yeah, most of the time is never our way.
Then when I do buzz by, I see, oh, those three stalls open, and then somebody pulls in, oh, no. So, we tried our best, you know, keep them clean, but yep.
Yeah, okay. Otherwise, I have nothing. There is a girls' basketball game on, I guess, so if anybody wants to go there or watch it, possibly on Channel 12. With that, anybody wants to make a motion?
I don't know.
Second? That's over.